All right, good evening, everybody. We'll now call this meeting to order. Mr. Bell, would you please call your...
Yes, I call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order.
And I will call the City Council to order. We're convening in our chambers in an open session. It's a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission may participate in the discussion today. So let's get started. Thank you, everybody, for being here. There will be time for you to make your public comments. Let's have some introductory remarks from Ms. Sager, presentation from our planning staff on proposed amendments to the UDC.
Good evening, Mayor and council members, Mr. Chairman, and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I will go through the list of proposed amendments from staff. Feel free to, if you'd like to stop me and ask any questions or clarification. The first item on the list is a recommendation to add language that would allow owners petitioning for annexation to submit a zone change application concurrently with their petition for annexation. This would not circumvent the zone change process. This would simply allow the two applications to run concurrently. Items two, three, four, five, and six are all similar. These are in our residential zoning districts. These amendments will add language to allow a one-story winger extension of the primary structure that does not exceed 50% of the overall width of the primary structure to have a reduced rear setback of five feet or 18 inches when adjacent to a paved alley. This is something that was in our former code that would allow these one-story winger extensions to go to five feet. It was removed with the UDC. We're proposing to bring it back. And since the UDC also adopted an 18-inch rear setback for detached accessory buildings to be 18 inches from a paved alley, it was appropriate to place that here as well. Item seven will change the maximum building coverage for a townhome in the medium-density residential district from 45% to 70%. This will be consistent with the current lot coverage of 70% for a townhome in your low-density, single-family SF2 district. Item eight will remove the land use for a manufactured home subdivision. A manufactured home subdivision is different from a manufactured home park in that a park is a single tract of land with multiple manufactured homes on a single tract, whereas a subdivision is individually platted lots with one manufactured home per lot. This is not something that is used in our current code. I've never seen a request for this, and so we are proposing to remove it. Item nine is in regards to automobile structured parking. That's a parking garage. Currently, it's a limited use in the MU2, 3, and 5 districts. Item 10 is related to it. Automobile parking lot, that's just a surface parking lot, but it would be the primary use on the property. There is not another building on the property. Both of those are limited use in those three mixed-use districts. But the limited-use criteria restrict where they can be located. Specifically downtown, it requires those two uses to have frontage on 19th or Avenue E or Avenue F or Avenue G. And so that's really not necessary. So we're proposing to make those permitted uses by right in those districts so they don't have to adhere to that criteria. Item 11 is to change a grocery store from a limited use to a permitted use in the auto-urban commercial and heavy commercial districts. The current limited-use criteria is only related to your neighborhood commercial district, so they're already essentially a permitted use, and so this will correct that. Item 12 is to change a smoke shop or tobacco store from a specific use in the NC, AC, and HC districts to a limited use. We will keep the same criteria that is required for a specific use, and it's listed here. It requires a minimum separation of 1,000 feet from another smoke shop and a minimum separation of 600 feet from public or private elementary or secondary schools, city parks, childcare facilities, adult care centers, hospitals, and places of worship. So we will keep all the same criteria but remove the requirement that it go before the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council to be approved. We will also require that they obtain a permit from our office in order to open the smoke shop. Item 14 is related to nightclubs and bars. The current language, where it is a limited or specific use, says that it has to be located 300 feet from any residential district. The issue with that is there are non-residential uses allowed in our residential districts, and so it's more appropriate to say 300 feet from any residential use. So we're proposing that change. Item 15, remove smoke shops from the specific use section, as we already discussed. Item 16 is related to a permanent concrete batch plant. It already requires approval of a specific use, but these two standards and the specific use criteria are really related to a temporary batch plant. So our proposal is to remove these two standards from a permanent use. Item 17, standards for manufactured home parks. The reference is in regards to the building code. We are updating it, since there were some updates to the building code earlier this year. I will point out on this item, it does reference manufactured home subdivisions. So if council chooses to approve the earlier amendment we discussed in regards to removing manufactured home subdivisions, that language would need to be removed from here as well. Item 18, manufactured home parks. Again, you're removing the subdivision and adding in a minimum acreage for a park to be 10 acres or more. That was in our former code. It was removed with the UDC, but we feel it's appropriate to bring that back and require that. Item 19, personal service home occupation. This was called customary home occupation in our former code. It's when an individual has a business from their home. They are limited in what type of business they can do, but this amendment will allow them to have that business in their home or in a detached accessory structure instead of requiring it to be in a detached accessory structure. Item 20 is related to an outdoor storage for a non-residential use. The language states an outdoor storage facility, which could potentially be interpreted as a building rather than an outdoor uncovered storage area. So we felt it was appropriate to change facility to area. Item 21, special exceptions. Special exceptions were in our former code, and they were approved through the zoning board of adjustment. They were removed from the UDC. There were only a handful that the zoning board of adjustment considered, but we have found that it is appropriate to add two back in. The first will be that the maximum number of days for a temporary use could be increased by the zoning board of adjustment, but not to exceed 60 calendar days. And the second one is that the designation of the front lot line for development of a property may be changed from the definition that's currently in the UDC. The UDC is very clear in how to determine the front lot line, but there may be an instance where it would be more appropriate to use a different frontage, and the ZBA can consider that. Item 22 is related to the visibility triangle. This is when you have a corner lot, and you have a certain area of visibility at the corner where you cannot have structures that would impede your sight and cause issues with traffic. We do allow shrubs and fences to be three feet in height within the visibility triangle. We allowed that in our former code, and so we're putting that language back in to make sure it is clear. Item 23 is related to infill compatibility. These are your front and rear contextual setbacks. So if you have development that was built prior to current regulations, and you have new development going in between that would require a larger setback, they can use these contextual setbacks, but currently they're limited to residential uses. We want to remove the residential requirement so that commercial uses can use them as well. Item 24, this is a cleanup item. If you'll remember, two years ago, when we adopted the Unified Development Code, we removed the MU4 and MU6 districts. There's a few instances where the code still references those two districts, so we are removing those references. Item 25 is in regards to parking ratio. Currently, every use has its own designated parking ratio. The number of spaces is determined by the gross floor area, depending on the use. Our former code had kind of a catch-all for retail multi-tenant spaces, where it allowed one space for every 175 square feet of gross floor area, no matter the use. When you're planning a multi-tenant building, it's sometimes hard to know what's going to go in there exactly, whether it's a restaurant or a retail space, personal service, and they have different ratios. So the proposal here is to allow multi-tenant development with a minimum of three tenant spaces, consisting of at least one restaurant and one retail or personal service use, to apply an average of the parking ratios required for those uses to the entire development. Item 26, again, we are correcting the MU6 reference, changing that to MU5. Item 27, this is in regards to buffer yards. This is an amendment that was approved in the fall of last year, where we added an option. When a district buffer yard was required along a rear property line adjacent to an alley, a minimum seven-foot solid masonry fence could be built in lieu of the buffer yard. We've had some instances where there's an alley that is a side property line, so we're proposing to remove the requirement that it be a rear property line. 28, irrigation for required landscaping. We're updating the reference to the building code. We want to make sure all our references are correct and updated. 29, in regards to signage. This is dealing with a freestanding sign that may have been built prior to current regulations, and they are wanting to change the cabinet of the sign. So they're keeping the sign base, changing the cabinet or the face of the sign. So rather than requiring those to come into compliance with current regulations, as long as the overall sign area does not increase, the height does not increase, the base remains, and the new cabinet does not encroach into the established setbacks, they'll be able to change the cabinet of that sign without bringing the entire sign into compliance. Item 30 is related to side setback requirements for monument signs. Currently, depending on your frontage, it will determine your minimum side setback, whether it's 30, 40, 50, or 60 feet. That has become an issue with lots that are more narrow. And so we are proposing to go back to what our old code required, which was your side setback is a minimum of 1/4 of your frontage. 31, in regards to wall signs. This would allow structures whose primary use is automobile structured parking, a parking garage, and have a minimum overall height of 50 feet, shall not be limited to 20% of the building facade for wall signs, but instead, wall signs shall not exceed 35% of the area of each facade. Item 32, in regards to clearance for wall signs. Currently, the code requires wall signs to maintain an eight-foot minimum clearance from the ground to the bottom of the sign. It's really not necessary for wall signs. We have a clearance requirement for blade signs. Those are signs that project off the building, and that is necessary to have a minimum clearance requirement, but we don't feel it's needed for wall signs. Item 33, 33, 34, and 35, again, are just correcting, removing the MU4 and MU6 references. Item 36, this is in regards to the signs allowed in your residential districts. We are proposing to change the number of signs from one per building to no maximum, and from 48 square feet to 10% of the facade. Again, you do have some non-residential uses allowed in those residential districts, and they need to be able to have appropriate signage. This is still less than 20% allowed in our commercial districts. 37, in regards to your base public and non-residential sign standards. Currently, the sign setback from the front property line, again, is based on your frontage, that is minimum 20 feet. That has proved to become an issue with shorter signs, and so we're proposing to reduce that and still dependent on your frontage, have anywhere from a 10-foot setback to a 45-foot setback, depending on the height. 38, this is, again, correcting a reference, removing the MU4 and MU6. Same with number 39, as well as 40, as well as 41. Item 42, in regards to driveway spacing. Currently, a principal arterial has a 300-foot separation between driveways, whereas a minor arterial has 250 feet. So we're proposing to change principal arterial to 250 so they match. Item 43, cluster subdivisions. The UDC adopted different types of subdivisions, conventional and cluster. A cluster subdivision allows a developer to have smaller lot sizes but requires a minimum amount of common open space for the development. This will add clarifying language that if a subdivision is intending to use the cluster regulation, they will be required to show the area to be dedicated as common open space on their preliminary plat boundary or final plat when a preliminary is not required. So we know upfront what the development is intending. Item 44, in regards to your street network and design. It references a major street, which is vague, and so we want to clarify that we mean an arterial street. Item 45, your public wastewater systems. This same language regarding minor improvements is already in your code in relation to public water systems, and so we are just adding it here as well for your public wastewater systems. Item 46, this is your development review summary. We, if council approves the amendment to add special exceptions to the code, we will add it to this development review table as well, just showing the appropriate process for them. Item 47 is, again, removing MU4 and MU6 references. Item 48, you can disregard. We determined that the UDC is already correct in that reference. Item 49, notices required on a final plat. Again, updating references to the building code. Item 50, this is your parallel construction alternative. The way it's currently written, it would allow a commercial development to construct their infrastructure, paving, water, sewer, at the same time they're constructing the building. We would like to expand this to multifamily office and industrial uses as well. Single and two-family residential cannot do this. They have to have their infrastructure in first before they can build and sell the homes. 51, in regards to non-conforming uses. We wanted to clean up the language on this item and be very clear on what a non-conforming use is. It is one that existed legally when the zoning restriction became effective and has continued to exist, even though it's no longer in compliance with current restrictions. Number 52 would remove a manufactured home subdivision from our definitions. Number 53 would amend the definition of a manufactured home park, adding the requirement that it be a minimum of 10 acres. Item 54 adds a new term and definition for a crescent. This would be a bulbous additional right-of-way dedication where two streets intersect, creating a crescent shape, which allows for vehicle-turning movement and/or access to the lots abutting the right-of-way. Lots fronting onto a crescent, she'll follow the same minimum front setback as lots fronting onto a cul-de-sac. These, you'll often see in neighborhoods. It's a half-moon, kind of a little inlet. It's not a cul-de-sac. So we didn't want to call it a cul-de-sac because that could have other implications, where you have the lots fan around the half-moon or crescent shape. And so they need to have the same setbacks as a cul-de-sac. Item 55, your definition of a front lot line. This is already how staff is interpreting this, but this, again, clarifies what we are, how we are interpreting the definition. So that when parcels intended for multifamily mixed-use or non-residential, the front lot line shall be the abutting dedicated street right-of-way of greatest designation, or when two or more lot lines are the same, then the lot line of most narrow length. And same on that second sentence. Item 56, the definition of a lot currently states that it is the contiguous area of land under one ownership having access to a street or other public access. Might not always be public, so we wanted to change that to state or other access easement. That is it, and I would be pleased to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions for Ms. Sager? I don't see any coming up. Anybody on the P&amp;Z have any questions? Y'all have ability to let me know if you want to have a question? I don't know. Do they have the ability to let me know? They have microphones. Could you, do you have a thing to punch on yours? I don't think you do. Okay, all right. No questions? All right, thank you, Ms. Sager. All right. I guess now I will open the public hearing on this matter. And so if you have a comment on one of the items, if you will please come forward and give us your name and your address and which particular, you can denote it by section. It'll probably be easier to denote it by the number. And let us have, hear your comments then.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Good evening, Chairman and members of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'm Terry Holman with Eagle Reading Associates. We're at 1601 Avenue N. I serve on a small task force. That's a subset of our developers' council. We have been actively engaged in helping the city work through these amendments and, you know, as time has gone through. I will tell you that we had a very good opportunity to review all of these with staff, the ones that you were just presenting. We found out that, believe it or not, we were already, had pointed out some of the same items. So with the exception of a lot of the signage items that are in the sort of the middle of your packet, the items 30, 31, 32, those, we didn't really weigh in on those. It was nothing that we really, as, our little group took a hard look at. So we don't have an opinion on those. However, on all the other items that are on your list, I will tell you that we stand in support, and we would appreciate your vote for it. Thanks. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Holman? I see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, I'm Ronnie Wallace with Beaton Bow Homes at 6307 82nd Street. And our agenda item pertains to item number four. So before I start, I want to give y'all a handout. So on behalf of Beaton Bow Homes, we respectfully submit a formal request to amend Section 39.10.002 of the zoning ordinance regarding the single-family cottage definition. Specifically, we propose the removal of the stated 1,300-square-foot maximum home area with the current definition. In lieu of this limitation, we propose amending the definition as follows. Single-family cottage means a type of single-family detached dwelling that is located on its own lot, which is less than 5,000 square feet and is used by a single family. This amendment reflects our continued effort to provide clarity and functionality in how the single-family cottage designation is implemented. So don't want to take up too much of your time. I do have a brief example I could share with you if you need further explanation, and we definitely appreciate your consideration.
All right, are there any questions? I have just one question in your definition. There, you say a single-family detached dwelling that is located on its own lot, which is less than 5,000 square feet. Obviously, that's the square footage of the lot itself, not the dwelling, but that wouldn't be a small cottage, okay?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. That's right. That would be the lot area maximum of, or less than 5,000 square feet. And then we would just eliminate the 1,300-square-foot home area, which created a little bit of confusion between Beaton Bow and city staff. It was just a minor clarification there. Basically, if we, if we're trying to build a cottage that's 1,200 square feet, but we define that as living space. And so this requirement with 1,300 square feet shows that we're complying. We're under the maximum of 1,300 square feet. But city staff was interpreting that as adding a garage. So if we have a 1,200-square-foot home and roughly 300 feet of garage space, we're, they're seeing that we're over. We're at 1,500 when we should be at 1,300, but we think we're at 1,200, and we're in compliance. So we met with Kristin and her team and city staff through a series of meetings, and we're able to work that out. And that's where we were able to develop this revised, simplified explanation for cottage. I think the intent there is that cottages are simply to be built on a smaller lot, less than 5,000 square feet.
All right, Mr. Collins.
So Kristin, you may weigh in on this as well. Is there a limitation to how much of the 5,000-square-foot lot can be covered in cottage definition?
Yes, it's 65%. It's not in the definition, but it is in the regulations in the UDC.
Here you go, making me do math in public again. So we're talking about the possibility of putting a 3,000-square-foot home on a 5,000-square-foot lot.
3,250, yes.
I got close, thank you. So, you know, I guess in, now I understand the question, and that presented, presents it in a different light when we're talking about the difference between a garage and 3,000 square foot on a 5,000-square-foot house. So I think that brings about some consideration for us. Thank you.
Okay, you bet.
Ms. Sager, is there a definition of a cottage? Is it the square footage?
The current definition limits the maximum area of the home to 1,300 square feet. That was added in recently, one of the recent rounds of amendments, because there was no way to distinguish a cottage between a detached, single-family home. So a conventional subdivision in your SF2 district has a minimum lot area of 5,000 square feet for a detached, single-family home. It has a minimum lot area of 3,500 square feet for a cottage, but there was nothing defining the two. And so we added the maximum home area to the cottage to distinguish the two, but Mr. Wallace, you know, discussed the issues with that. And so we think it would be more appropriate to say cottages must be on a lot that is less than 5,000 square feet. Otherwise, if there's nothing to distinguish the two, the minimum lot size for a single-family home in Lubbock is 3,500 square feet.
Right.
Right.
Okay, that's it. Yes, Ms. Collins?
So I guess in light of that, would it not be, or would it be suitable to the developer and more appropriate to make, just make a designation that included that garage or say 1,300 square feet of living space? I've got a, personally have a concern here where, you know, the possibility that I just presented roughly could occur, and we get this cottage designation, and it just really creates a lot more density and a lot more service in a small space. Would it be suitable, acceptable, if we redefine the living space or define that 13, make that 1,300-foot, 1,500-foot to include your garage or do something in that regard rather than, I just feel like we opened the door very wide with that language.
I understand where you're coming from. You can think of a cottage as being very similar to a garden home. Garden homes have the same minimum lot size requirement, 3,500 square feet, same maximum lot coverage, 65%. The only difference is garden homes are built on your zero lot line. So you have one wall of the home directly on the property line, 10 feet of separation between the two. So it's the exact same density. Cottages are just moved over to the middle of the lot where you have five foot on either side.
And the...
So we may need to look at garden homes then, I'm just saying.
But the setbacks still apply in every instance. So the density can't overcome the setbacks?
No. And again, if we were going to limit square footage, you could potentially run into an issue if you're looking at a two-story home, because now you're looking at two floors instead of one.
I'm just thinking about the footprint personally, but...
Stretching the definition of a cottage for... Yes, Ms., yes, Mr. Rose.
What's the, for the garden home, what's the percentage max?
65.
65 also, okay.
Dr. Wilson.
So I just want to clarify, what is, what is the ask today? Is it to completely...
Because it's not currently in what's presented. Is that right?
That's correct.
So the ask is to amend and just remove the square footage maximum completely?
Yes, and to remove the maximum square footage of the home that's currently in the definition, but add language that limits it to a lot that is less than 5,000 square feet.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Ora Cortez and I live at 217 North Avenue O. As a resident of the Guadalupe neighborhood and executive director of North and East Lubbock Coalition, I am here tonight because I strongly oppose the language in Section 3902019 of the Unified Development Code regarding concrete batch plants. My house is located less than 500 yards from three concrete batch plants. I have video recordings from one of these batch plants that has been releasing dust into the air on a daily basis, which directly affects our neighborhoods and its residents. Particles being released by these batch plants has a direct effect on the health and welfare of our residents. These particles are unlawfully being released in violation of their permit conditions. NELC has an active request for a contested case hearing against one of these facilities, and we are about to file a TCEQ complaint against another one. Why are, why are you making it easier for these companies to do, who do not follow the rules to operate in our neighborhoods? All the polluting facilities are in our neighborhoods and now you are making it even easier for them to operate. To my knowledge, the city has yet to downzone any heavy industrial vacant and city-owned properties in our neighborhoods. The Carrillo Family Recreation Area and Aslam Park, which are in my neighborhood, are still zoned for industry. Why are we making it easy on these concrete batch plants and not the people? On numerous occasions, residents from North and East Lubbock, along with officers and members of NELC, have appealed to our city's leadership to look at the problems these facilities pose to our residents. And all we're asking is that our neighborhoods be made safe environments for our families. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions? Mayor Potem?
I have a question for Ms. Cortez, please. Ms. Cortez, what would be your solution for this particular item?
I'm sorry, would you repeat the question?
Yes, ma'am. What would be your solution? What would you make a recommendation? How would you address it?
There is several recommendations that we have made, not just to the city council, but to committees that have, the city council has proposed to look at some of the amortization and downzoning. And one of the things that the city promised to do, amortization and downzoning committee did not look at because the city was going to do it, was exactly the vacant lots that the ci, that is owned by LITA, by the city, by all these other faci, all of these other entities. Now that, right now that they're vacant, that is when they should be downzoned, before somebody puts something on that property and then it's going to be more difficult. Other things that we have asked that the city consider is the one year when we ask for these buildings, they're in our neighborhoods. We don't want to see these dilapidated buildings in our neighborhoods. And we asked that that one year be changed to six months. That again was never considered. We have also asked for mediation through the, one of the, where we filed our complaint, HUD. If they would mediate with North and East Lubbock Coalition and the city, and I think that the answer was, we received a resounding no. So we haven't been able to sit at the table with any members of the council or the attorneys or anyone to be able to say, hey, you know. I mean, we've come before the council and on numerous occasions and said what it is that we want. But again, we have not received any, any help at all.
Thank you, Ms. Cortez. And just for the record, I have never personally been asked to meet, just for the record.
No, we have made that, those requests through the city council and through different committees and through different, even through the planning and zoning when, you know, we appear before them. So those requests have been made.
Thank you for the input.
Ms. Seager, can I ask you a question? So my understanding is that this language that you are removing, that was put into the UDC. And so you're asking it, so the UDC, was this discussed when we were drafting the UDC to put in the temporary use? Or is this just language we adopted from some boilerplate language?
So there's actually two different types of batch plants in the UDC. A permanent one, which requires specific use approval from the city council, and then a temporary one. They each have their own specific regulations. But these two items are listed in the regulations for a permanent one, which requires a specific use approval, but they, they basically reference a temporary use. Because they state that the facility shall only be used for a development project within the city. And it states that the duration of the use shall coincide with the use of the facility for a specified construction project, which is more akin to a temporary plant. And so we're asking that those requirements be removed from a permanent batch plant that would require your approval.
All right. So a permanent batch plant still is a specific use?
Yes.
All right. And the batch plants that are operating currently, are they, are they non-conforming uses? Or are they conforming with their zoning?
They're potentially non-conforming. It depends on what the regulations were in place at the time that they were started.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Collins?
So thank you. The language that's in red here remains in the section referring to temporary batch plants?
Yes, I believe, I can't tell you off the top of my head what the regulations are for temporary, but these are more than likely in the language for those.
Okay. So, you know, before we meet on this again, I'd ask you to look into that and make sure that that remains, that there is a time limit on a temporary plant.
There is a time limit.
Yeah. And, and so if you would look into that when we get back to talk about this again in the coming days. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else?
Good evening, council members, Planning and Zoning Commission members. I'm Gordon Wilkerson with Wilkerson Properties at 501 East 66th. Thank you for taking time to get our input this evening. Also, thank you very much for the, for the rollback that you did on the buffer yards and the landscaping provisions when you met last September. Passed out some information. I guess maybe Mr. Atkinson is getting that to you right now. In September, I went over a document that showed the difference in industrial development that we can do on some land we own in West Lubbock in a development called Santa Fe Park. Essentially, the UDC takes away our ability to develop 24% of what we could have developed previously. We walked through that. I won't, I won't repeat that. But you both should have site, you all should have the site plans showing the difference under the old development codes and the new UDC. We also came this evening requesting that your consideration of three additional amendments. Now, the first relates to signs. And after some further conversation with some people that know the sign world better than I do, I'd like to amend that motion so that, or that proposed amendment so that it only applies to the industrial zones, LI, GI, and IP. We've run into situations where it's no longer permissible for us to put a monument sign on a corner lot. And that's been a real, a real problem for many of our customers. I understand not wanting to put monument signs on corner lots, on heavily trafficked commercial lots where the lots are more narrow and the traffic is much greater than we have. What you find in our typical industrial park is a much, much greater lot frontage and also much less traffic. So the amendment that we were proposing for Section 39.3.023B7B, if I can get that out, is that, first of all, thank you for rolling back the setbacks. That's a huge help on the signs. But we would propose that a monument sign, that there be an exception for corner lots only in the industrial zones for a monument or pole sign to be placed on the corner, provided that it's not within the visibility triangle and that it's not at a thoroughfare intersection that's carrying large volumes of traffic, because we see the safety concerns with there. But in our typical experience and what we've developed out there over the last 25 years, neither of those is an issue. When you talk about new codes shrinking your buildable footprint by 24%, there are really, there are really two things affecting that at this point. Side setbacks, side setbacks, rear setbacks, and also a new requirement for loading zones. The material that you have should include our proposal on setbacks, which is essentially on light industrial and industrial park to take the setbacks back to what they were prior to adoption of the UDC. The most punitive for us is the rear setback, although they all definitely shrink our buildable footprint. The rear setback is 100 feet. And in our case, that's with a seven-foot masonry fence, an alley, and another fence on the residential side. It's, it really restricts what you can build. So I'd ask your consideration on the setback amendment that we've put in front of you. Also, for loading spaces, I believe that the loading space insertion was, was really well-intended. But I'm not sure that it, I really don't think it should be mandatory. We're finishing up a 50,000-square-foot building for Johnson Controls, John Stones Supply, not Johnson Controls. We've got six loading zones because the driver in their business is heating and air conditioning contractors. And so they need those. But we have many customers that just use dock high loading and unloading and do not need loading zones. And when you require a loading zone even for a facility as small as 10,000 feet, if you don't need it, you don't need it. So our amendment says that a loading zone should not be mandatory until the development reaches 50,000 feet. We think that, first of all, if a developer needs a loading zone, he will incorporate that into his plan. No issue with the thought. I just don't think it should be mandatory. Anyhow, that's, that's what we have this evening. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Wilkerson? Have you discussed this amendment with Ms. Seager or?
We have met with, with Mr. Rahino and Mr. Wallace. Talked with Kristin about it on occasion, but happy to sit down with anybody and everybody that would like to talk about it.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
No further questions? All right. Next person wishing to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor, council members, commissioners, and neighbors. My name is Patrick Little and I'm here to discuss 2900 Avenue K, Block 3, Lots 5 and 6. We've provided a handout that summarizes our request and includes some sketches of the area. We're under contract to purchase the building and turn it into an eight-unit apartment building. However, there's a zoning restriction standing in the way and we'd love your help. The property is zoned high-density residential and there are other, there are other, there are other multifamily properties nearby. So the area is a good fit. However, we can't proceed because there aren't any multifamily units on that block space. We are drawn to this property because the building has a very sturdy structure. There's plenty of parking to support the residents. And the previous owner had actually started the renovations to turn it into apartment building some time ago. The reservation, the renovations were stopped because of the zoning restriction and the property has been sitting idle for six years. Completing the renovation would add quality apartments to the city and it would also spruce up the character of the neighborhood. We're clearly new to the process and we're learning as we go. My teammate Audrey has done a lot of legwork and Cassie and the planning staff have been great in moving us along. We know no decisions are being taken tonight. We just respectfully request that you consider this block fence rule in an upcoming UDC amendment cycle. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to take them now.
Does anyone have any questions? I see none. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. You have a question, Mr. Collins? Okay. Next. No other, no one else wants to come forward and speak? You come, no, not coming forward. All right. No further comments? Yes, ma'am?
You got the strike.
Okay.
I'm Jane Henry. I live at 5233 20th Street. And I think I should have about aged out of appearing at city council and zoning meetings. One of our articulate speakers is a former city planner, Jim Bertram, and he's unable to be with us tonight because of health issues. So we're all getting old, so hear us now. I really don't quite understand why we're here tonight. I know Kristin said in the newspaper this week that we were talking about clearing up details of items that are missing from the UDC. It seems to me that the signage, particularly on the tech parking garage, is an issue that has already been discussed and determined, twice denied by the zoning board and twice turned down by previous city council members. So lots of Lubbock citizens have already contributed information and feelings about this issue. I can't drive anymore and so I have to have friends and family drive me to and from things. And almost inevitably, when we drive past the parking garage at the Tech Stadium, someone says, "I thought they ruled against those signs. Why hasn't the city taken them down yet?" And I guess that's pretty much why I'm, what I'm here to say. I think a lot more people would have been here tonight except that they had a conflicting school board meeting. So we're here asking you all not to change the votes and the voices that have come before you. And don't tinker with the signage again. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the commission. My name is Stephen Falk. I reside at 12112 Savannah Avenue in Vintage. I have a number of things to share with you. But to echo what Jane just said, I have personally attended, I believe, three public hearings with the ZVA. They asking the owners of the garage, various owners of the garage have asked for a variance and it was turned down every time. I know most of you, if not all of you, know what the requirements of a variance is. It's trying to correct a hardship- It's trying to correct a hardship so that an owner of property can build something on their property. There has to be unique characteristics of that property that makes it almost impossible to comply with the zoning code, whether that's a grade change, which I know really is not something we come to deal with around here, or a unique shape of the property. And a variance shall not be granted if the public's health, safety, and welfare is at jeopardy. And a variance cannot be issued or approved if it's just a financial hardship. We all know what this project is. This has been there for a long time. It's the parking structure across the street from Jones Stadium on the north side of Marsha Sharp Freeway. These signs, this whole matter started in twenty-twelve. It's gone through a review period, which was agreed to by the ZBA at that time, and one sign came down. I honestly do not understand why the other two have not gone through that review period for the same reasons the first one came down. So, having, I assume the owner, having gone through several reiterations of trying to get a variance to increase the signage size, has now come to you to change the UDC to allow what they could not get approved by citizens that, whether it's you as members of the council or previous councils, have asked to serve on the ZBA who said no to this variance. So, now come to you to change the rules so they can get what they want. That is discouraging to me. And as far as a variance, there is no reason to give a variance to, and I know you're not dealing with a variance, but a variance for a financial hardship. And I'm going to say to you this evening several times, there is a public health, safety, and welfare concern associated with these graphics, which, they're not yard signs, they're not wall signs, they're billboards. And billboards, I don't believe are allowed in this zoning district. And I need you to give me a little latitude here. I'm going to count one Mississippi, two Mississippi, three Mississippi, four Mississippi, five Mississippi, six Mississippi. If I'm going east on the Marsha Sharp Freeway, and I go underneath the overpass that comes from Fourth Street, where you can either come back down on the Marsha Sharp Freeway or go to University, the time you start seeing this sign is as you approach that bridge. Well, if you take a second and a half to just notice the sign, and there's actually two signs, if you take three seconds to read the first one, three seconds to read the second one, and a second and a half to get back and see where you're going, you're on a curve. It is a, it is a health and a safety issue for the people traveling that roadway. Now, you're going to say to yourselves, or others in the audience will say, "That has never happened." Well, a week ago tomorrow, I was leaving North Lubbock, excuse me, and I decided I, those of you that know me, I have the reddest Jeep in the world, and I don't like a dirty Jeep. So, I always decided I was going to go get my Jeep washed. As I was coming over the Clovis Highway, sixty-five miles an hour, truthfully was not breaking the speed limit, a sixty-five-foot semi had swung wide to make a right turn to come down to the Clovis Highway. Twenty feet of that truck was sticking in the travel lanes, and it was an F-250, I think, I only had about two or three seconds to stop, stopped in the travel lanes in the middle, that's where I was. There were vehicles stopped on the outside lane where I was, and I'm pretty sure it was the Lord that stopped me, because I don't know if I had that good of brakes. Things do happen. Public safety is at risk. I would hope we don't lose anybody making that turn, trying to read this sign, and so on and so forth. So, there, it says in the UDC that, let me find it, bear with me for a moment. Well, there it is, right there. Nope. Well, it says in the UDC, I believe, that a wall sign shall not restrict means of egress, light in air, things of that nature. That fabric on those signs, I went up and looked at it. It has to be a certain perforations in that sign for air to circulate, and it's not that way. The building code says, if I may, I have too many pieces of paper here, so you must excuse me. That building is an open parking structure. It says, and an open parking structure means that the openings in the wall allow the evacuation of carbon monoxide that vehicles produce as they move around inside that garage. For natural, this is, I'm reading for the current building code, International Building Code twenty-one version. For natural ventilation purposes, the exterior side of the structure should have uniformly distributed openings on two or more sides. The area of such openings in exterior wall on a tier, that's floor-to-floor, should not be less than twenty percent of the total perimeter of the wall area of each tier. The aggregate length of those openings considered to be providing natural ventilation should not be less than forty percent of the perimeter of the tier. When you calculate, now, I will confess to you, though I'll be glad to do it, I have not gone up and pulled my three-hundred-foot tape out, start checking things. But, I think you're going to find that there's not adequate ventilation from a building code standpoint that the UDC specifically speaks to, that you cannot negatively impact. I would encourage someone from the city to go confirm that so that it is a, it is a, it is a valid computation. In table thirty-nine, point oh-three, point oh-two-three, dash, two, that's the twenty percent of the facade that y'all are considering raising to thirty-five percent. It says, ten percent of that twenty percent must be for, that's the biggest you can be for a tenant. Now, there may be an office leased by HEB or an office leased by Gene Messer, but I have not been able to buy my bananas there saying that's HEB as a tenant, nor have I, though I'm not a Ford person, I know some of y'all are, I have not been able to buy an automobile. That is, go to a place, get out of my car, talk to a salesman, go drive a car for that sign which faces south, or go to a grocery store for the HEB sign. Those are not wall signs. They are billboards. And I'm pretty sure, unless something is, I missed it, billboards are not allowed to be on that building. I know this may shock some of y'all, I actually have notes of what I'm supposed to say. And that's, I've even lost that. There they are. I am concerned that if you open the door to allow signs of that size, if you will tighten your eyes up, squint, and consider it a wall sign, you open it up for a parking structure of fifty feet or taller, there are a plethora of buildings in this city that have blank walls that are taller than fifty feet. We're now going to have those kind of signs everywhere. I encourage you to honestly remove item thirty-one from your list. This is simply an owner of property trying to get around what two or three previous ZBA groups have turned down. Doesn't seem the way that ought to work, because I'm pretty sure y'all are supposed to take care of the public health, safety, and welfare. Now, forgive me. I've heard that one of the concerns and the reason that is now on the list is that so the city is not going to get sued. I pay taxes to pay for the lawyers that sit on the, sit in this building. Let them sue. They've already lost once in court. They're just not getting the vision that the ZBA won't back it, and the courts will not back it. I encourage you to delete item thirty-one in its entirety from consideration, I believe it's the twenty-something of this June. Be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Mr. Harris?
Yes, sir. I just want to concur what you're saying as far as that signage goes, because I lost someone personal because of that sign. I don't know if someone cut him off, or they got distracted by that sign, but they hit concrete and they died.
So... I'm sorry to hear of your loss.
I understand what you're saying about that, them big signs being a distraction, because I have lost someone because of them signs.
I'm sorry you lost someone.
So, I concur with you. Thank you.
A question for Kristin. Or a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry. She tows me out of the way all the time.
Stephen talked about the type of material that the sign. What do we have down, and where would that be in the UDC? I'm sorry.
So, the UDC, that's really a building code requirement, and so our building safety department, when they permitted these signs in twenty-twelve and twenty-seventeen, twenty-eighteen, would have reviewed the material at that time and made sure it met building code.
So, it's, it's all good? I mean, it's following, it's in compliance?
It should be, yes. Since the permits were issued, they met the building code requirements.
Is the person advertising required to be in a building like that, to actually have an office there?
So, when the zoning board of adjustment approved the variance in twenty-twelve, they added four conditions. One of those conditions stated that the signs were limited to tenants of the building. It did not define what type of tenant. I went back and reviewed the minutes, and it did even reference that Texas Tech leased student parking in the garage, and there was an apartment complex next door that leased parking. And it, you know, looked like it was referencing anyone who had a lease with the building, and that's how it's been interpreted over the years.
Okay. And then, Stephen, what currently, I know you said it's Gene Messer and HEB.
Yes, I'm not supposed to use HEB letters. Our firm does United's, and if I said HEB, I would get in so much trouble.
What's on the picture right now?
HEB.
No. What's on the picture? What's the picture?
It's things I think you can get at HEB.
Tell me what, tell me what's on there.
I was driving on, I'm sorry?
Tortillas?
Yeah. I'll take his words good with me. If I may, I have those minutes too, of that evening when this was originally approved. Rule one. At the time, there were no graphics presented by the applicant when it was approved. There was no fabric mentioned in these minutes that they would catch up my word, probably not the word here, and it would get approved. Now, in past meetings with the ZBA, it has been said, I've, this is the applicant speaking, "I've been told that it's perfectly fine. I can't see any perforations in the wall." It, and it, trust me, well, I don't, don't say that, Stephen. I'm pretty sure it doesn't comply with those percentages that are required by the International Building Code. It's pretty solid stuff. Now, one of the signs, the third sign facing east, it's down. Except the material in the back, it's still there. So, from a pure evacuation of the carbon monoxide, will that air blow through that structure? That's three sides of the building, not totally, but three sides of the building is constricted with that airflow. And, and, and you may say, "How can that possibly, why should I worry about that?" When you have a flat tire and you change it, you're now down where the carbon monoxide is settled on the floor of that parking structure. If you, I was a student, believe it or not, a bazillion years ago. I changed the oil in my car out in the parking lot at Murdo. If you're a resident in that apartment project and you go to change the oil or work on your car, you're now have the potential of being in that carbon monoxide layer. And frankly, the wall, the retain, the wall that keeps you from falling out touches the floor. So, there's really no place for that to go out on the bottom and be extricated from the building. It is a real problem. It does not, I don't believe, comply with the building code. I would encourage you to talk to, to building safety folks and make sure it is what it is. Did that answer your question? I know that's a lot of technicals. I apologize, but I deal with that stuff all day long. That's why my hair is so dead gum white. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
My name is Robert Henry. I live at fifty-two, thirty-three, twentieth, and I promise I did not cheat off my mother or Stephen. They both kind of said the exact same thing. And before I get started, I also wanted to say, as someone who's a country music singer and has been looking for a guitar, a piano player for the last couple of weeks, I have not been paying tons of attention. But, just as a regular, run-of-the-mill citizen, I'll say that, from what I heard of Ms. Seeger's very early presentation, I'm going to say I disagree with probably about eighty-five percent of it. Just someone who's lived in LA, Dallas, San Antonio, Amarillo, it just sounds like we're going to end up looking a lot like Amarillo, and we all know Amarillo's ugly. So, I'm just going to say that. But mostly, I'm here to talk about number thirty-one, and I'll just read what I had to say, but we'll see how much of it's a repeat. First of all, I have no idea why we're even here. We already voted this down more than once. The last time was last summer, which is almost a year ago. And it just makes no sense to me. The constituents told you what they wanted, and I don't know why we're even talking about it. Every time I drive past that garage on Marsha Sharp, I wonder why the billboards are not down already. We lost, you know, the people that wanted it up, lost the vote a year ago. It should be gone. And, and I just, I don't understand. Also, it sounds like they want to make them bigger, which, to your point, really? Come on, let's do the right thing here. Let's be Lubbock, not Amarillo. And if you think about where this one is, you're coming around that curve, and I did a Google search. And Google, this is according to Google. "The average driver is said to be distracted by a billboard for at least six seconds." And I'm sure that's longer for someone like me who's dyslexic. So, if you're, and if you're going sixty-five miles an hour, you travel a little over ninety-five feet per second. So, you factor in the curve, six seconds, ninety-five feet a second, that's close to six hundred feet of not looking at the road on a curve going pretty darn fast. I just think it's really dumb to have such a distraction anywhere, but especially right there. And I, yeah, I've already said it. I've already said everything I was going to say, and so has my mother, and so has Stephen. So, thank you.
Mayor Protim, did you have something you want to say?
I think he did copy his mom's speech.
Good evening. My name's Mary Kreitz. I live at four-six-one-seven Eighth Street. I want to start by thanking each of you for your service to the city. I know how much you get paid. I'm here tonight to ask that item thirty-one wall signs not be adopted. And let me explain why. I'm going to read, I'm going to read the amendment that's proposed. The structures whose, the structures whose primary use is automobile structured parking and has a minimum overall height of fifty feet... and has a minimum overall, overall height of fifty feet shall not be limited to twenty percent of the building facade for wall signs. Instead, the wall signs shall not exceed thirty-five percent of the area of each facade. That's a pretty big increase. I want to start with, why do garages need larger signs? There are already very large buildings with very large signs at twenty percent of the facade. And based on the Raider Park Garage north of Texas Tech, the signs are unlikely to be used for its main tenants, which was the intended purpose for the increased signage when it was granted as a variance. In that garage, the ground floor restaurant, the bar on the top, nor the garage itself advertises on those signs. The current signs on the garages, was mentioned earlier, and by the way, they're larger than any billboard in town. Well, they're for HEB and Gene Messer. Okay, well, let's use some, some common sense here, just like Steven said. No one's buying groceries and no one's buying a car there. So these signs are going to be used for off-site advertising. We don't need more of that in Lubbock. Is it really worthy of being in the, in the UDC instead of staying as a variance if it doesn't impact very many places? The zoning board of adjustment, i.e. ZBA, was appointed by the city council to handle requests like this. That's still the proper place for peculiar conditions when they crop up. In addition, it seems contradictory for the city to now propose this as an amendment when the same issue has been denied by ZBA multiple times. Let ZBA do their job. There are six existing garages that meet the minimum fifty-foot requirement in Lubbock. Those include several garages in downtown, in North Overton, at Covenant Hospital, and likely some future student housing garages, including the contentious one being developed right on Nineteenth Street. The Raider Park Garage is ten levels, around a hundred feet tall. Why set the height in this amendment at only fifty feet? That height requirement seems very arbitrary, too low, and open to expansion of more larger signs around Lubbock. This amendment also opens the door for more variance requests to ZBA. I can see someone asking, "Well, why can't my forty-five-foot-tall garage have this bigger percentage?" That's close. "Why can't my office building with a blank fifty-foot-tall wall or a thirty-five-foot-tall wall, well, why can't I get that increase?" This proposed amendment poses the potential for radically increasing sizes of signs in Lubbock, and we don't need that. Please do not approve proposed, the proposed amendment number thirty-one. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Collins?
Hi, Mary, and this may be more for Kristen as well. In the UDC, is there a differentiation between a billboard and a sign?
To a point, yes. A billboard is a land use, so it could be on a property by itself, no other use associated with it on the property. A sign is for a use that, it, I don't want to say for a use, it is on a property that has another use. We do not regulate the content.
I understand about the content. I guess I question, I would think that if a sign on the side of my tile shop is a sign for my tile shop, I don't intend to advertise the other guy's tile shop on my building as a billboard. And so I'm wondering if there's enough separation between those two items to, to make us question what's on, on that particular building. Is it a sign or is it a billboard?
We have, we consider it a sign because a billboard could be a standalone, freestanding on its own property by itself.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, mayor, councilman, planning and zoning. I'm Joe McKay, fifty-one fifteen Second Street, number twelve. This kind of goes back to when I was chairman of the ZBA in twenty, whatever it was, twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one. And this came before the ZBA at that time as a follow-up to the original approvals and this original variances that were outlined in the, in the ordinance. As it turns out, the, I guess proponents at that time came back and the ZBA read, ran through the requirements for hardship. Literally, the application and enforcement of these regulations will result in practical difficulty and unnecessary hardship. That would be the basis on which you would approve, making changes that did not comply with the rules and regulations. The thing that you have to follow are, there are five questions. If they wanted to prove, request the variance, where they need to say it's unique, oppressive, and not common to other properties, and not against the public interest. That's one thing that they would have to prove. Not merely that the property cannot be utilized to its highest and best use, not merely financial, and not self-imposed, and not simply a hindrance to the developer's goals. The ZBA at that time did not find that any of these issues would be appropriate to allow for a variance to be changed, to continue with the sign as it was. I just feel like that our group looked at it real hard and looked at what the requirements would be and felt like that they did not meet those standards that were established to determine the hardship. We usually recommend that item thirty-one be not brought forward. Thank you.
Mr. Glassing.
Good evening, sir. I have a question for you, if you don't mind. Thank you for coming and speaking to us this evening. I've, I've heard this argument about ZBA's review of, of the variance process, and you're not the first person to make it, so I want to ask and make sure that I understand the point that you're making. Are you suggesting that we should not make any amendments to the UDC if they wouldn't qualify as, as variances as approved by ZBA?
No, I'm not. I'm saying that there are certain criteria that they would have to be in order to be granted a variance by ZBA. And those were the ones I tried to point out to you. In granting the variance, it says they result in substantial justice of being done, resulting not to be contrary to the public interest and be in accordance with the spirit of the regulations.
There, there are many changes that we're looking at as part of this review that would not qualify as variances at the ZBA. Are you suggesting that if a UDC amendment would not qualify as a ZBA variance, that we shouldn't approve it? Or are you, I, I just don't understand the connection between a variance request versus an amendment to the UDC?
Well, the variance request has to meet certain standards. And those were the ones that I've mentioned to you. Regulation or putting a law, changing the requirements would be a change that you're speaking of and doesn't fall in our ZBA's purview. That would be the P and Z's purview.
Right, and so that's what I'm asking. What's, what's the connection between a variance request and a change to the UDC that we're considering now?
I'm not quite sure I understand.
That's okay, thank you.
Mr. Bell?
I'm, I'm just reading between the lines here. I think, Mr. Glassing, what he's trying to say is it's gone to the ZBA before, the ZBA's denied it, and now we're looking at changing it to allow it. And why were we letting the ZBA say, "No, it's not good," go through it several times to do it, and now come back and say, "Okay, it's fine, let's go ahead and do it." I think that's what they're trying to get at when they keep talking about the ZBA. Am I correct, Mr. McKay?
Thank you.
Ms. Seeger, if, but at one point, the ZBA did allow a variance.
That's correct, in twenty-twelve.
Even though it didn't, I mean, I find it hard to figure out how it met any of those criteria when the variance was allowed.
The variance was approved, yes.
It just was approved? All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. Zach Brady, sixteen-oh-two Thirteenth Street, Law Firm of Brady and Hamilton. I am here on behalf of the owner of the Raider Park Garage Mobile IT. My client's president, Manuel Chavez, is also with me in the audience. Good evening to the members of the ZBA. I'm going to try to constrain my comments to the proposed UDC amendment. Feel inspired by Councilman Glassing to do that. I am happy to answer questions about the ZBA process, especially the original ZBA process, because I was in the room in twenty-twelve and was part of that process. And likewise, I'm here to talk about the UDC amendment and not try our lawsuit, right? I'll just say this about that very quickly because some of you've asked me. The city and my client voluntarily and jointly abated that case, in other words, just pushed pause in that case a couple of years ago, and we've had several productive conversations during that time. We would prefer a policy solution, and that's what this UDC amendment contemplates. We're here in good faith and appreciate the opportunity to address each of you. So, and to folks on the other side, many if not all of whom are my friends, we certainly understand their positions. I'll talk more about those later, and this is one of those things that sometimes people in a community just see things a little differently, and that is just fine. Certainly respect their right to be part of the process. We believe this proposed amendment represents good policy by addressing the unique needs of structured parking facilities, including Raider Park Garage, while respecting property rights and other constitutional rights and reducing unnecessary bureaucratic hurdles and uncertainty. It promotes stability and avoids some of the pitfalls of the current variance process. The current process does have a tendency or possibility has, has been underlying our discussions to lead to inconsistent results, and that certainly is part of why we're here. Can lead to a lack of stability. And I think it's important, as we think about the proposed amendment, one thing that's really important about it is that it's very narrowly tailored. It's a narrowly tailored solution. To answer a point made by Ms. Kreitz earlier, Ms. Kreitz did remind me, mayor, and Mr. Glassing in particular, reminded me why I always felt so good when I got to present her as an expert witness, because she does a great job. And it wasn't as often as I would have liked. Does a great job of laying out her points. Our building is one hundred and eight feet tall, just so you know, as you think about potential further narrowing, if that's something that you have an interest in doing. But I do think it's narrowly tailored as drafted. I think it balances regulation with property rights. I think that changing the code is a good thing because it recognizes the unique uses of parking garages. This is a distinct purpose building. It's a large structure and it's going to be there from a visual standpoint regardless. And parking garages, or at least the ones that don't go bankrupt, are going to be located in high-traffic spaces. And so I think that this makes a lot of sense and aligns with those ownership needs. Now then, Mr. Harris, I am very sorry for your loss. It's something I just learned about today, and I don't want you to take anything that I say as diminishing or disputing or anything like that, okay? I certainly appreciate your comments and understand your position. I, I am obliged to point out that the Texas Transportation Institute at Texas A&amp;M has analyzed the relationship between billboards and traffic safety across the state and found no significant, statistically significant evidence linking outdoor signage to increased traffic accidents. Those signs have been in place beginning in twenty-twelve, the ones that we're talking about here. Again, with all due respect to the councilmen, it has not been something that has, where we've had a rash of accidents. I don't want to diminish any one person's loss, however. It's also important along the safety line to remember that the amendment prohibits LED or digital signage. That, nobody, certainly from our side of the dais, thinks that that would be a good thing there. TexDOT has, has done a similar study and came to a similar conclusion on signage. Now then, the, that original variance was granted for seven years with a condition, okay? And the condition was to monitor the progress, taste, and effect of the signage. Setting aside for a moment whether a city can, can regulate taste, it's something that we agreed to at the time, and the reason was folks were concerned about the location and what sort of, let's just say, racy signage might go up there. On the one hand, we're on a college campus, but on the other hand, we know that six Saturdays a year at least, that's the biggest living room in West Texas, right? That is the biggest family gathering space in West Texas. We cannot do anything about the verbal language that is used in those buildings on those six Saturdays. Some of us might have uttered some of that that we're not proud about at one point or another in a ballgame, but we do take that responsibility quite seriously. And I doubt you'll hear anybody say anything negative about any of the signs that have been on that building in those thirteen years. The old ag communications major in me feels obliged to point out, I think they're some of the very best signs that we've had in Lubbock, Texas. A few obvious points, and I'll be happy to take questions. Again, that signage is not obstructing the view of anything other than a monolithic parking garage. The garage is necessary and well-utilized by Texas Tech students, by the residents of the twenty-five-twenty apartments. It's an asset to the area. We've heard slippery slope and safety arguments since twenty-twelve, and again, I just don't think those bad outcomes that we've heard about have come to pass. And finally, with all due respect to my friends that see this issue differently, their arguments are made against each and every sign or billboard proposal. There's no acknowledgement in the bulk of their arguments that this is a monolithic structure that's going to block the view regardless. We think this is a narrowly tailored solution. We think it is in line with the original decision in twenty-twelve, and I'd be happy to answer any questions and ask again for your support when you take this matter up in June.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Brady. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. My name is Alan Henry. I reside at thirty-three-oh-two Forty-third Street, office thirty-four-oh-seven Nineteenth Street. We sell insurance if you need any. I had not intended to speak tonight, and I appreciate the opportunity to appear before you. The Planning and Zoning Commission, I was a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for many years, and it was a wonderful time because we got in- because we got in on all the neat stuff that was being done right after the tornado, before y'all were born. Then it was my pleasure to serve on the City Council for 14 years, four years, as your mayor. And so I know what you're thinking. It says, "All you've told us so far is you're old." Okay, well, maybe so, maybe so. But I appreciate the opportunity to make a very brief remarks about this particular case. I am very familiar with it. It is a case that, ever since its inception, ever since the building was planned, actually, has been an exception to the zoning ordinances of the city of Lubbock. And so naturally, has had some issues that have been attached to it over the years. Just beginning with the way this particular case started, I can tell you, and Mr. Brady, one of my good friends, and actually, used to be my next-door neighbor. But this did start many, many years ago, when the building was planned. And there was discussion about going to the City Council at that time for a zoning reclassification, which is exactly what's happening here. It's a zoning reclassification. And it actually turned out that the decision was made to seek a variance before the zoning board of adjustment. And so that was a very long, very, very contentious hearing before the zoning board of adjustment. And the original plan was that the staff, actually, and I'd be glad for you to read the minutes. The minutes are 11 pages long. But the staff was not convinced that this would fit into our zoning ordinance. But the ZBA, in order to reach a compromise, first of all, suggested, at the suggestion of the Director of Planning at that time, that there be a trial period to see exactly how this would work, because it was revolutionary. And the minutes show that there was a suggestion of three years. And then it shows that the proponents said, "We really, really need more time than that to amortize our investment." So it will show that the zoning board of adjustment agreed to make that compromise, leaning over backwards, in my opinion, for the proponent. So that happened for seven years. So fast forward seven years to the time that Mr. McKay is talking about. The plan came back to ask, basically, "We'd like to re-up. We'd like for you to consider keeping these here." And there was a very long hearing. I happen to have been at that hearing. And once again, the ZBA looked at what was being requested. And please keep in mind that the ZBA was set up under state statute. It's different than Planning and Zoning Commission, because the appeal from Planning and Zoning Commission goes to the City Council. The zoning board of adjustment, on the other hand, goes to the requisite court. So the plan was that the zoning board in adjustment would award an additional grant. Well, the problem was, and is to this very day, we have to show that there is a hardship, that for some reason, this zoning is a hardship to you. And so they have to grant that. The way the statute is set up, and the rule is, an economic hardship is not considered. If an economic hardship were considered, then everybody in town would just build their building with this, that, and the other, and would say, "I'm sorry, you know, it would cost me money if you do this." So the ZBA turned that down. And it's my recollection that after that, an appeal went to the requisite court. The requisite court said, "No, the city of Lubbock was well within its rights. We will not accept your appeal." So that was, and now you'll see that the two billboards, the one on the signs, whatever, one on the east and the one on the southeast are vacant. So the proponent, the owner, went ahead and took them down as the ZBA had requested. So now we're three years later, because the seven years at the time the ordinance was, I mean, the agreement was made, the seven years was from the time the signs went up. And they didn't all go up at the same time. So that's why there was a case, three years ago, the original one. Then, now, this last year, there was another case, because that's seven years from the time that the Gene Messer sign went up. The ZBA, at that time, had another very extensive hearing and determined that there still was not a hardship. And in addition to that, it was really no different from the previous case with a sudden link and the other sign. So the decision was made, after due deliberation, that that sign should come down too. I'm not sure exactly the sequence of events, but there was an appeal to this. And that one was also not accepted. Then there was an appeal, there was a case, in my mind, and Mr. Brady could tell me if I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm right on this, a second case, just simply asking for a variance. And but it's entirely possible there was only one. But the point of all that is that the answer was, it still does not meet the definition of a hardship. It's not, you know, rocket science. It's not a hardship. You know, it's not a tree growing in front of you. There's not an overpass in front of you. You know, it's not a hardship. So that's a, so at that point, then, it was incumbent on the property owner to take that sign down. And that has not happened, which brings us all the way to today, in which we have, which Mr. Brady just very, you know, just brought up the term. It's verily narrowed for his client. And that's what you have a good lawyer for, is to have something for your client. I happen to have been on the City Council when the original sign ordinance was passed. And I hate to tell you that, but that ordinance was passed 50 years ago. And but the reason that ordinance was passed, people always say, "Why did we do that?" And there was one word, it has, the word is fairness. The fairness, because up until that time, there was a hodgepodge of various sign regulations. If you were in C2, you had this kind of sign. If you were C2A, you had this kind of sign. And so this one basically simplified it. It said, "If you have this much square footage, and you're in the proper zone, you get this much signage." It's pretty simple. That's why it's lasted for 50 years, because it's fair and meets the, what we try to do in city government is to be fair to everybody. I would submit that it, I'm not sure how fair it is to the other businesses in Lubbock for one business to have actually signs that are larger than the largest billboard permitted in Lubbock. And nobody else can. This is a one-business ordinance. And Councilman Glassy, the answer to your question, I hope, and I'm so sorry I've taken so long, but we're trying to fast-forward 50 years here. And it's not the easiest thing in the world. But the question you ask is, what's the difference between this? It's actually the difference between a zoning board of adjustment case and a UDC case. Of course, the UDC case is codified. And it tells you what you can do in this particular case. And so if it's a UDC case, it will come straight to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You, ladies and gentlemen, will look it over. And then you'll make a recommendation to the City Council. If it's a ZBA case, on the other hand, what they're asking for, they're not asking for a zone change. They're asking for a variance. And they are saying, in essence, "We have a particular problem." And I know, for example, the ZBA hears hundreds of cases of people that want to talk about their carports, or about their setbacks, or about, there's a myriad of things that the ZBA hears. Because if every one of them, if every carport owner came to the City Council and said, "We'd like to change the UDC, change the ordinance, so it would meet it." It would help my particular house at 3302 43rd. You can see the mess we're being in. So all of this, I'm so sorry, once again, that I took so much time. But I would really, really, really encourage you to leave this Section 31 out of your law and leave it where it is now, so that if someone, anytime, and incidentally, there are many, many, many sign cases that we never hear about. We hear about this one, but there are hundreds of sign cases. And many of them, a good percentage of them are agreed to. They will say, you know, "Here's my reason I can't do this." Or, "Here's the reason I can't do that. I've got a particular problem." And so they get a variance, Councilman. I may have a waiver, Councilman Glassy. But they don't all have a law that applies only to them. So I urge you to leave this, the ZBA, let them do their work, and let these wise people at the PNC do their work. And thank you for your work.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor, members of council, commissioners. My name is Mont McLendon. I live at 16th and Salem and work at 1500 Broadway. And I have no present intention of talking about signs. So please don't take the next thing I say in the context of that conversation. I wanted to rise and say how much I appreciate this process. I think it's really important for us as a community to take a moment to periodically review our regulatory ordinances in regards to how we envision the built environment in our city. In that way, I think we can make incremental improvements as we go along. We don't, if we wait too long, we risk those ordinances, those regulations becoming sclerotic. And maybe even overcomeable, not overcomeable. Allowing us to do this on a periodic basis, I think, is very wise, because it allows us to focus in on how our community has adapted and what changes might need to be made to improve where we are. So thank you for that. Looking through the proposals as a whole, I think it's fair for me to say, having focused on the mixed-use districts quite a bit in the past, that I reviewed those proposals set before you today largely as cleanup and appreciated. I actually looked at eight and nine as they relate to structured parking in the downtown or in the mixed-use districts as those limited uses is referring to, go back to the parking ratios, which right next to it says, "They don't apply a mixed use." So I thought it was like an odd circular reference. So I think cleaning up that, it makes a lot of sense. As a testament to staff's openness and willingness to take feedback as we go through this process on a periodic basis, I want to give you the example that I really rose to talk about tonight, and that's the very first one on your list. The request is simply to allow annexations and zone changes to run concurrently. Currently, as a function of where we put the default zoning classification in the UDC, which is future, in the zoning map provisions. And it makes sense to have a default zoning classification. We created a paradigm where, when you annex, you get SF2. And that's not always appropriate. And I think developers and land users wanting to be a part of our city through annexation would appreciate the opportunity to have the zoning discussion in connection with our annexation discussion. Let me give you two examples. One, I think, is kind of right down the road of how we normally see annexations. And one is maybe a little bit different, but I think important nonetheless. The first is, standard developer brings to you, meets the requirements for annexation regarding adjacency, and has a development that would like to avail itself of city services and contribute to the tax basis of the city, all those sorts of things, happens to run on the intersection of two thoroughfares. It would be nice to be able to come to you and say, "Look, we have a paradigm here where we have commercial clusters or commercial development at hard corners. Let's have that conversation as we lay out the totality of what we're doing. Or let's have some garden office, or some NC at the collector points, all those sorts of things, so that it looks like normal, master-planned development." And it's not, you're not introducing sort of a temporal, a time-based risk on whether or not you're ever going to get those things. So I think it makes sense for the normal course to say, "Okay, here's my annexation. Here's my proposed pre-plat. And here's my zone cases that go along with that, so that we can have a conversation all at once about what's appropriate and what's not as we add normal annexation to the land." Second example, and this is really about economic development. Imagine, if you will, a parcel that meets the requirements for annexation, where through economic development leader or otherwise has a user that would like to come in and invest, but they're not going to build single-family homes. They're going to put something more intense on that land. And they need city services, and so they need to be annexed. Currently, the way that works, and I called John Osborne and said, "What do we do here?" He said, "Well, right now, I say, well, if I'm making economic development-type discussions with people, I just have to say, if you're going to trust it, if the city's willing to make this deal, they're also going to be willing to go through the zoning, which seems like an unnecessary risk. But it also adds an unnecessary delay, because you can't run these things in parallel. If you have to run them serially, then you go through the entirety of the annexation process. Then you start the zone change process. And then you're, so you're adding, you know, 90, 120, 180 days to a project that probably is coming here because they're ready to go." And so the request in the very first amendment proposed is to simply allow those two processes to run at the same time for both of those reasons. I just think it, I think it's good to have all of the discussion about annexation and planning at the same time. And so because we have this process, we can do this now. And I think that's a wise way to go about it. So if there's any questions, that's all I have, all I got.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. McLendon. Kristin, I've got a couple of questions for you. Going back to the signs.
Okay.
The way it reads, it says, "It's not going to be limited to the 20% of the building facade, but shall not exceed 35% of the area for each facade." So a four-sided building... So a four-sided building potentially could have signs of thirty-five percent of the coverage on each side of the building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And otherwise, buildings are limited only to, uh, a sign of twenty percent on the primary facade unless they're on a corner and then they have two facades. Is that the way I understand that?
No. Currently, um, the, the percentage regulation for wall signage on any building is for any facade unless there is a specific requirement limiting the number of signs.
Okay. But what is considered, a facade is just any side of a building?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So my second one, what is the maximum square footage that a billboard can have? Is there a maximum?
There is. I believe it is seven hundred and fifty square feet.
All right. And my third question is, uh, and I believe I heard, uh, Mr., uh, I heard Mr. Falk say that forty percent of a, of two sides have to be open to the air, a linear forty percent. Is that correct? Is that your understanding? It's a building code.
That's a building code question.
So I'm assuming he's correct about that. So the, if he is correct about that, the thirty-five percent can't cover that opening or?
It would depend on the material. Um, it, it really is a building.
Is that a building code thing?
It's a building code question.
That's a building code thing too?
Right. It does not have any effect on the signage.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Brady, do you have, if you have something to add here? I know you're knowledgeable, so.
Appreciate that. Good evening. Um, the, the Raider Park structure does not have any coverage on the north side.
I understand.
And then on the east side, that small sign that has been used for the restaurant tenant intermittently, frankly, that's about, I think, twelve percent. So it, it wouldn't, even if those, as I've heard it described by Mr. Falk, it would meet that even if those two sides where the larger signs are were impermeable, for lack of a better word.
Okay. All right. But theoretically, just not considering your particular building, uh, any building that met the criteria of fifty feet and it was a parking garage could have signs up to thirty-five percent on every side of the building under the way this is, the way this is written. Is that correct?
Yes, as long as the primary use on the property is a parking garage.
Yes.
So an apartment complex that happens to have a parking garage, that is not the primary use. They would not be allowed to do this.
That would exclude that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And my fourth question has to do is with, because I, I've seen this in several cities where they use the side of a building for a mural.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a sign, it's not advertising anything in particular. It's used as a form of art, artwork.
Sure.
So, but my understanding that murals are much more limited under our code, is that correct?
Murals are considered signage now since we do not regulate content.
Okay.
Um, so it is a sign that is painted on the wall of a building. It's very specific about that. And, um, there are certain size requirements, um, but it's not, I would not say it's overly restrictive. It's a reasonable size that's allowed.
Well, so my question is if someone wanted to paint a mural on the side of a parking garage, um, you know, that's fine. If they could meet these, this criteria, they could do that. It doesn't have to be a, a wall sign, it could be a mural.
Sure.
Or is the mural limited in some other way so that they could not create a mural of this size?
The mural is limited in size. Um, I, I don't know if it would be allowed to cover thirty-five percent of the wall area. I would have to review what's allowed.
Okay. Well, that's kind of my question is why the mural would be more limited than a sign if we consider a mural a sign. I mean, I, I think, you know, from personal opinion, the, the, the murals are creative and interesting and they add personality and they're not advertising their works of art, you know, some better than others. Uh, but I think they add a lot of, so I'm just a little concerned about how these two things interact with each other, what's allowed and why we would allow a whole lot more for one than maybe for the other, um, even though trying not to get into the content argument and all that kind of stuff, I know. So, Mr., thank you.
And I can get you the specific regulations on murals.
All right. Mr. Falk, did you have?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually found the piece of paper in my stack that I was going to read with, to you a moment ago. This is under, uh, section thirty-nine point oh three, point oh two-two, prohibited sign types, materials, design elements, and locations. It's item number E, obstructive signs. Any sign that obstructs any window, door, fire escape, stairway, ladder, or opening intended to provide light, air ingress or egress for any building is required by law or which can hide from view any traffic or street sign or signal or device is an obstructive sign. You can't do it. The building code, as I read, which I can read to you again, there has to be ventilation in an open parking structure or it has to become mechanical to vent. You bring in air at low and high to get exhausted out. So I, I found that, thought I should share that with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or com, any other comments, public comments? Mr. Rose?
Are these signs not, uh, this is probably for Kristin, are, they project off the building, correct? Would that still be considered, if we're talking about airflow here?
Right, right. You're correct. The structure does have a projection off the building. Um, there is a limitation on how far wall signs can project off the building, but it is still considered a wall sign, um, because it is not projecting perpendicular to the building like a blade sign would be.
Okay.
Okay, just one more shot.
One more shot.
No, I can't limit you.
I appreciate it. That projection's eighteen inches maximum. Uh, the signs we're talking about on that parking structure, they're steel, it's probably six to eight inches square behind the sign material. So if you were to take the opening and assume there's no steel there, eighteen inches, eighteen inches, that still is not going to comply with the requirements for that ventilation as far as cross ventilation and so forth. But the, the dimension is not multiple feet, it's eighteen inches as, as the UDC currently stands. Okay? Good.
Mr. Romo, did you want to say something? Are you just sitting on the front row?
I'll lay into this, but if you still have the public hearing open, I'd like to.
It's still open. Yes, sir.
I was, I was joked at a while ago about not taking two bites at the apple tonight, but, uh, this is a different item than I spoke on earlier and it's not signage. Um, I'm wearing a different hat at the moment. Um, I spoke to you before about representing the task force that, uh, Mont McLendon and I have served on. But having heard some comments just tonight by Mr. Wilkerson, it reminded me of an, an issue in the industrial districts that I'd be remiss if I didn't maybe help back up a little bit. I've had some just passing comments with some of the staff about the dilemma that we have in industrial zoning, notwithstanding the, the lady who lives in, I believe, the District One maybe, who has, I think, some, some care and concerns about batch plants, for example. Throw that aside for just a moment. We do have large areas of industrial zoning in parts of the city which are not embedded in residential districts, right? And our, our, our setback criteria and all those types of things in the industrial zoning districts, I think, I think personally work pretty darn well for large new tract industrial developments, right? And I, I think they're very well-intended. The dilemma that we face is, I, in fact, I personally have been working on a couple of small, very small infill industrial sites, um, just east of I-27. And it's in what at one point was a residential neighborhood, which over the decades has really transitioned to industrial zone. Well, you have really small tracts of land and you gotta, you gotta, poor guy just wants to build him a, a little warehouse, you know? And it, they're small lots and our zoning criteria doesn't really account for that. So I'm late to the dance on this subject, obviously, right? But as you consider everything that you've heard this evening, particularly with respect to the industrial zoning, we, we have two different layers of care and concern on that. One is new developments with, which I think our new code is set up pretty well for. The other is how do we really address some of these older parts of town that are truly developed as industrial, but they're just, they're, they're not big wide-open tracts and you just can't get a hundred-foot setback, you know? So I'm only asking that, um, that moving forward, that we find ways to somehow address that. Um, we may be too late this time around, but I would like to, uh, kind of maybe provide that little bit of, uh, perspective on, on the comments that Mr. Wilkerson made tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Yes, thank you. And Terry, to your point and maybe to, to Kristin's comments earlier, on, on item number twenty-three, uh, we bring up residential infill and compatibility, uh, but what it appears that we're trying, or, or going to do here is strike residential from the context of infill. So if you would, give me a quick, uh, definition of infill.
Mm-hmm. Uh, the definition in the Unified Development Code for infill is that it has, uh, developed property on at least two sides adjacent to it. So if, mm-hmm.
Two sides adjacent. So we're talking about an individual lot.
Mm-hmm.
That has like construction on, but it has to be on other side, not across the street or, and, and I'm, and I guess really I'm asking in, as it pertains to Santa Fe Park and, and, and the Wilkerson's development where they already have existing, um, commercial development, whether it's industrial or not, becomes kind of a question to me because I don't really think, and as our discussions that we had earlier in the week, I don't think that their, um, development is industrial, uh, by new definition. I think it's heavy commercial or maybe slightly above that, but it's not necessarily industrial. And so, but if there's, if a lot's not platted, it doesn't count as infill. And that's a question, not a statement.
No. Uh, the, the plating status of the property would not affect infill. Santa Fe Park is a good example that you bring up. Uh, the particular lot that Mr. Wilkerson owns is developed to the east and west, so he could use this regulation if it were approved and use infill setbacks based on the adjacent existing development. Or, to your point, warehousing is allowed in the heavy commercial district, which is a more restrictive zoning than your industrial districts and has lesser setbacks required.
Well, that's, that's, that's my first question. Thank you. Yeah, I've got several and they're not about signs, so. Okay, keep going, yay. Uh, item number thirty-six, uh, if you don't mind.
Mm-hmm.
And so we mentioned signage in base residential districts and we talked about usage, uh, business uses or other, you, I think you said other uses in a residential district.
That are non-residential, yes.
So could you explain, are we talking about a church, a school?
Yep.
Give me a few more.
Um, churches, schools, daycares, uh, even offices are limited in some of the districts. Um, you know, an apartment complex, you know, it's multifamily, it's residential, people live there, but it's considered multifamily. They would be, they would need signage for their development. Um, a grocery store is limited use in the high-density residential district. Medical offices, there's a few, mainly in the high-density residential district, a few in the medium-density residential, and then of course, daycares, churches, schools in your SF-two and lower zonings.
And so as we, as we make a shift to ten percent of the facade, um, again, math in public, but let's say we have a twelve-foot face and a fifty-foot frontage.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, we've got six hundred, um, square feet, we could have a sixty-square-foot sign on the face of that.
That's correct.
Which is a six by ten on a twelve-foot, um, that's, that seems to be a rather large sign, uh, in my mind for a, a residential use area. Yeah, I'm sorry. Mr. Rose just pointed out, I said nothing about signs and here I am again.
(laughing).
Thank you, sir. Um, it, it, am I right in, in my?
Yes, your math is correct. Um, I mean typically, from what we've seen, business owners are going to choose signage that's, fits the building.
Mm-hmm. Well, I, I, again, and, and like the other questions that have revolved around signs, normal or what we are used to seeing is different than what we write into the code.
Mm-hmm.
And so there, there's where my concern comes on, on all things and, and the rest of my questions as well, is, is what we are used to seeing and verse what we, versus what we allow in the code sometimes could be dramatic and, and unwelcome, given the fact that I think somewhere earlier we said we have to light them. When you have a sign, we're going to have to put a light behind it or a light in front of it.
So we, we don't require lighting of the sign, but wall signs cannot be a digital screen, LED screen.
But in a residential use area, uh, and, and this happens to maybe be even, uh, we, we back up another item or two and we say, "This is a, a business in a home that's allowable." And so my hairdresser is allowed to run her business in her house and now she's allowed to put up a sixty-square-foot lit sign.
No. No, sir.
Okay.
Um, so the, these signage requirements, there's other language within the sign ordinance outside of this table that specifically states this cannot be used in single and two-family residential subdivisions.
Okay. Okay, good. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, let's go to forty-two and forty-four. Uh, driveway spacing on forty-two, you said this was for a principal arterial.
Yes.
And then we go to forty-four and it's just a arterial.
Yes.
So that could be a minor, uh, section line split road, is that correct?
So the, the section line splits between major thoroughfares are collectors, so it would not apply there. This would be limited to arterials which are thoroughfares, whether they're minor or principal, are determined by our master thoroughfare plan.
Great. Okay, so there is definition to that.
Mm-hmm.
All right. And then finally, and thank you for indulging me, uh, item number fifty, parallel construction,
Mm-hmm.
eligibility. And so we talk about here multifamily and, and, and you'd mentioned a single family and duplex not being allowed parallel construction.
That's correct.
Um, would it not be reasonable to think when we talk about, I, I guess when I think about multifamily, I'm talking about high-rise apartments, you know, very high density. Uh, but how do you define a, a line of twelve-town homes? How would you define a quadruplex or something like that that's really subject to the same concerns that we would have for single-family, uh, parallel construction? And, and we just, we don't have very much of a gap between a duplex and a quad.
Mm-hmm. So townhomes are still considered single-family because you have one unit per lot, the property line runs through the wall. And then you do have multiplex in the code, which would be a triplex or a quadplex. Even though that it's called a multiplex, it is separate from multifamily, which is apartments, five or more units. So I should clarify my statement, single, two-family, and multiplex would not be allowed the parallel construction.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Protem.
Mr. Wilkerson, how are you doing?
I'm doing well.
Thank you for doing Lubbock one oh one, by the way.
Oh, you're welcome.
Um, do you have residential, any type of, of homes around you? Do you don't?
Yes, there, on the north side of our property line, there is a mobile home park. On the eastern part of our land and on the western part of our land, there are some single-family homes.
Remind me your address, please.
The address of the land we're talking about?
Yes.
You could use six thousand two forty-second street, uh, and then any point west of that until you get to about, it does not go quite as far west as Milwaukee.
Mm-hmm. Okay. That's really all I wanted. I'm, I'm going to drive by it, just take a look at it.
I want to clarify a couple of things. There've been several suggestions that, that we should look at a, at a heavy commercial zone because people think of Ferguson and they say, "Well, that's a store." And it, it does have a showroom. It's about a forty thousand square foot building and maybe five thousand feet of it is a very nice showroom and it does attract retail traffic. If you're looking for a sink or a bathtub or a toilet, you're going to go in, you're going to see what they have. But the preponderance of that building is a warehouse and it's nicely constructed and the warehouse part is relatively hidden from view if all you're doing is going to the store. But it's an industrial property. But it's an industrial property, as is most everything in that park. I mean, I'm not here to advocate just for our property. Clearly, it's what I'm most familiar with. It's easy for me to make an example of that. But you really need to look at this because I'm telling you, you've moved the goalposts, and we can develop 75% today of what we could develop prior to this adoption. That costs the city. We're finishing up a 50,000-foot building out there that's adding multimillion dollars to the tax base. When I can only build 75% of what I could build three years ago, you're kind of hurting the broader community. And there are enough incentives to develop outside the city limits. This is just one more. Frankly, a lot of guys that do this may not even be aware, probably haven't taken as deep a dive in UDC as they want, as, as they should have. That's their fault. But this is not a, a one-off. This is, this is more broad than that, and the criteria for setbacks in industrial development need, need a careful examination. Thank you.
That's fair. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Rose?
Kristin, I'm sorry.
No.
And I appreciate you and your team. Y'all have done a great job in allowing everyone to participate in this. What, on 36, why, why the change? What was, what was the?
Specifically because of the non-residential uses in those districts. I believe we had an apartment complex that 48 square feet is not very much for a multi-story apartment complex. That's one example.
Uh-huh.
But, I mean, there are other residential, other non-residential uses as well.
Okay. I just wanted to know that.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for coming and making your comments tonight. We, as Mr. McLendon noted, this is a living document. It's not a, you know, it's not the Bible. And we up here have enough experience with making decisions and then looking at them later and going, well, that wasn't the best decision in the world, and needing to revisit them. So, you know, we're always open to suggestions because we don't have any sort of, we're not omniscient, and we don't have any divine insights. I don't know about the planning and zoning, but we certainly don't up here and don't claim to. So, we, we want to continue to work on it to make sure that it fits the needs of Lubbock, and appreciate all your comments, and we will take them under consideration. With that, this public hearing is closed. But one more item is timeline and procedures for adopting the amendments to the Unified Development Code. Can you state those for us, Ms. Agar?
So, these amendments will be presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their regular meeting on Thursday, June 5th, 6 o'clock. If they vote to make a recommendation on the amendment, says will come to council on Tuesday, June 24th, at 2 o'clock.
All right. Thank you very much.